Now that I've done all that, I'm gonna introduce myself. I'm Robert Parks and I'm on the board of the League of Women Voters of Peoria. And I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. And I also need to thank the candidates for being here tonight. As you know, from my discussion so far, the format's gonna be a little unusual. I think that this is the speed dating candidate forum, because the candidates will go from table to table to table. You all stay where you are. You don't move at all. You stay where you are. We did this four years ago when there was a primary. There were fifteen candidates in the primary and it was chaos. But this worked reasonably well. So we're gonna try it again. Terry Bible is our moderator this evening. The candidates, the show announced the rules that I have uncovered already. And I'm gonna turn it over and we're, are we rolling? I just started thinking about this. Because we are recording the original part of this. And we'll post it on our, the League's YouTube channel. If you have missed some of the other forums, we did one for the ICC trustees last Saturday and that's on the YouTube channel now. We did one for the Park District, Central District of Peoria Park District. Next day after tomorrow, we're doing one for Beacon Mayor and the City Council. And then we will be doing one for the Peoria Heights Village Trustees. For that, I'm gonna turn it over to Terry Bible.
Howdy, everybody. We're all ready to have fun.
Civic, boring, and fun.
Okay, first, rules. Can you hear me? Am I close enough? Okay. Say, good evening. I'm here with Rob Parks. And tonight's candidates for office are coming up shortly. I am throwing myself under mercy and their mercy. Hopefully, I will get all the names accurately. And if I don't, that's my fault, not theirs. Let's see. They already drew for the order in which they're going to, going to appear and talk to you. So here are the rules. Turn off all cell phones. Except mine. All right. Second. Yeah, candidates too, phones off. There we go. Unless your notes run out. Please do not applaud, okay? That takes time away from the candidates answering questions. And we want you to get as much information out of this forum as we possibly can. Three, candidates will have one and a half minute for an opening statement. Each of them will have a minute to answer each of two questions that I will ask them. And then we're going to go into our speed dating format here. Four, we have timers. Wave your, wave your timing paraphernalia. Okay? There you go. They will give everybody a clue. They'll hold their paddles to say, show how many seconds are remaining. And stop paddle to tell people when to stop talking. And if you keep talking, I will yell at you. Number five, candidates, if you want the question repeated, just ask. Number six, after the opening statements and the responses to the two questions, the candidates move to those assigned tables, as we've all agreed. They will stay at each table for a total of five minutes. Then I'll announce that they need to move to the next table, okay? And the rotation continue until they've been to all the tables, okay? Please listen to the announcement to change tables. It's gonna be kind of what, you know, Alaman left over here. There's a league volunteer at each table who will help to organize. You guys wanna raise your hands, league volunteers? Okay. You know who to come for. Number seven, while you're at the tables, the candidates may take questions from the participants or the candidates might choose to give a short statement. We have suggested questions at each of the tables to give you ideas if you didn't come already. Okay? Are we ready to start? All right. Our first candidate coming up is Benjamin Nix Jr.
Thank you. Thank you for having us all this evening. My name is Benjamin Nix Jr. And I am looking to make a difference here on the City Council. One of the things that has me motivated in wanting to be a part of this awesome responsibility is the fact that I moved here three years ago. Called here to be a pastor at the Church of the Baptist Church. And in my time, my short tenure here, I've worked with Peoria Community Against Violence on board. I've met with a lot of families, a presence response team. And I've seen a lot of things across the city through the congregation, through my visits with families. And then also, I work at the unemployment office. And so I see a lot of individuals come through there. In my time, I have noticed that a lot of people would like some help, need some help and are looking for some guidance and getting to the place where they want to be. And I think that being in the position and being on City Council, I have an opportunity to work with the other council members to forward a plan that will take the city into the next level where it should be moving. And I want to be able to help direct that in the best way possible. I want to bridge the community and council together so that we can move forward to that place.
Our next candidate is Bernice Gordon Young.
Good evening. I am Dr. Bernice Gordon Young, a fifty-year resident of Peoria. I have an extensive history background here in public service, where I am currently the founder and CEO of the Texas Goja Peoria. And I founded that organization through my work in mental health. I've been a mental health provider for twenty-eight years. I have a PhD in mental health and forensic mental health, crisis and trauma, as well as any of your critical incidents. I serve as a specialist at the Peoria County Jail. I also am a business owner. I have a business, Mental Health Counseling. I've been doing that for twenty-two years, located in the Twin Towers. I also serve as a consultant to many organizations here. I am running for a Peoria City Council at large because I care about this community. I'm invested in this community. I have lived in every district in this city. The last twenty-two years, I've lived in the third district. Again, my business in the first, in the first district. But most importantly, there are five pillars that I want to focus on. Public service, or sorry, I'm sorry, public safety, job development, job and economic development, infrastructure, mental health, and healthcare. Again, I am Dr. Bernice Gordon Young, running for City Council. Again, I thank you for your time.
Our next candidate is Anu Wudupu.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum today. Dear Peorians, I was born and I grew up in Midwest. Oh, can't hear me. Can you hear me now? Okay. Talking the top of the line. Better?
Yes.
This is better? Can everyone hear me? Okay. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for holding this forum. And thank you for everyone coming here today. I grew up in Midwest. I went to law school, then I went to practice in New York, New Jersey. I moved to Peoria about ten years ago. I worked as a pro bono attorney. Then I currently work for OSF Healthcare System. I love Peoria. This has become my home for the past ten years and it will be my home for the future. I'm on the advisory board of Women's Fund for Community Foundation of Central Illinois. I'm also a proud member of women in leadership. I'm a commissioner for Joint Equity Commission on Racial Equity Justice. The reason I'm running for Peoria is I want to focus on quality of life, which will focus on enhancing the vibrantia of Peoria and downtown growth, accelerate job growth by retaining our talent, bringing more businesses and actually bringing more jobs. And also, I want to focus on our small businesses, how we can make them sustain for a longer term. With that, sorry. Yeah. I want to be your voice at the City Hall. So I am Anu Wudupu, your new future of Peoria.
Our next candidate is Lawrence Nashart.
Hello. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Peoria Public Library and all the other sponsors. And most of all, I want to thank you folks for being here. This is real participatory democracy. This is why, you know, we live in this country and I'm very proud to be here. My name is Lawrence Nashart. I'm a proud socialist, pro-labor, progressive LGBTQIA person. And these are the, these are the, these are the focuses that will be part of, that are part of my candidacy. I'm running for the marginalized neighborhoods and people in those places, like the East Bluff, where I live, the South Side, the Center Bluff, the North Valley, and all the other neighborhoods that have been neglected and left behind by City Hall and the powers that be for several generations. It's very important that before we can, you know, worry about bringing all these businesses into Peoria, that we worry about the ones that are here now. And most importantly, we worry about the people that are here now in their neighborhoods. And we need to have the reinvestment in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Many thanks to our team that's here for being so flexible. This is not an easy arrangement. Next up, Zach Wheeler.
The big guy at the end, make him walk through the crowd. I'm Zach Wheeler, a six-year incumbent on the council. Also, real estate broker with Remax. My time on the council is focused on economic development, the budget and dealing with neighborhood constituent issues. Also, the council liaison to the Peoria City County Landfill, Springdale Cemetery Authority Board, Vice Chairman of the Downtown Development Corporation, the past president of Peoria Historical Society, and on the Peoria Land Bank Board. So I try to serve our council in many different aspects of the community and challenges that we face every day. And my time on the council in dealing with economic development, we have to, to have revenue to do all the things that actually run the city, we have to have economic development, growth and jobs. So my time is spent trying to get deals done that allow us to bring jobs into the community. Recently, just finished negotiating a deal for land in the Warehouse District that will allow many buildings to come online. Assisted another council member in negotiating a deal that allowed us to give a sales pitch to an employer that hopefully will bring us five to six hundred employees. And then, working with our small businesses to get some, through some of the challenges that they face every day in dealing with our community development, public works permitting processes. And on the budget side, I spend most of my time there making sure that we spend effective use of your tax dollars. And last year led the effort to defeat the parcel pension fee.
Sorry, we're cutting you off. Thank you though. All right. Next up? Next up, Mike Vespa.
Hi, my name is Mike Vespa. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters and the library for putting this on. And of course, everybody here, everybody watching at home. This is great participatory democracy. Lawrence is right about that. I am a fifth-generation Peorian. I was born in Peoria, Proctor Hospital. I ended up going to Dunlap Schools in the North End, but I lived in Oak Brook in the city. Went to Bradley University. Spent three years of law school, NIU, came back here. Except for those three years, I've been in Peoria my whole life. I've been practicing law for thirteen years, six years as a public defender, doing everything from traffic tickets to felony trials. I've been working in the trenches, in our poorhouse, with hard-nosed prosecutors, you know, forging deals. I've been, you know, doing top jury trials, top felony jury trials. I've handled everything, nothing scares me. So I would, I would like to take my experience to City Hall and try to be more of a collaborator, a consensus builder. I think we can get a lot more done than we are currently getting done. And I'm optimistic. And also, I was a traffic commissioner. And it was about a decade ago. And I helped, helped push through the roundabouts that we see. I think they're fantastic. Save energy, no need for electric lights. And you don't have to stop, less stopping traffic, less emissions, more fuel efficiency. Kind of a walk, policy walk. But that's sort of where my head's at. Thank you.
Our next candidate is John Kelly.
Yes, my name's John Kelly. I am running for reelection. I'm finishing my first term on the City Council. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and all of you for showing up. This is a wonderful demonstration of interest in, I think, a very important race. My primary goal, being on the City Council, has been to positively affect the economic climate of Peoria. Now, that's not just for somebody that City Hall picks out and is going to help. I'm talking about everyone. We've got over eight thousand businesses in our city. If we can make their life a little bit easier, the effect would be huge. And that also bespeaks the idea that the greatest source of new capital for our city is in our city now. I have no problem with outside investment, that's great. But we often forget that within the city, we've got tremendous potential. I've been not a person of platitudes, but a person of real proposals, some of which have even been passed, some of which have not. But I asked for your vote on April fourth. Thank you very much.
Our next candidate is Kiran Dhiller.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here. I would thank the League of Women Voters as well. My name is Kiran Dhiller. And I live in the world of hope. So that's what brought me to Peoria. This is my fourteenth year in this wonderful city. I work at the med school. I teach the medical students. I do research on brain cancer. That's what my life is all about. And I wanted to take the same attitude back to the City Council. We are one of the very few people who are failed to, who are paid to fail. We fail every day. And then, at the end of the day, we go back and, and think about it. Why did we fail? So that's the attitude I took into the City Council. My goals, I would say, this is my half-term. This is my, I'm actually one of the incumbent, but I am a half-term incumbent. And then, my, my focus is all about bringing biotech, or bringing, utilizing the healthcare as much as we can. Because healthcare is going to be the next empire to the city of Peoria. My focus is all about building talent. My focus is all about building workforce that could actually run the city of Peoria. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Damario Wu.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Yes. I know I look super young, but I promise you I'm holding up to run. I have, I'm a lifelong Peorian. I have lived here for my age, forty-one years. And in that time, I was a Peoria police officer. And now, in my current role, I'm the Director of School Safety for Peoria Public Schools. And that is the reason why I'm running. I've spent basically my whole life in law enforcement and criminal justice. And I've run across many families that have been asking for help. And we have been doing way too much debating and not enough helping families. Way too much being in silos and vying for the light and not enough making movement. So when I saw families begging and asking for help, and actually, one mother was asking for help so long and the city, the village didn't respond fast enough for her, and she ended up committing suicide because she needed that help. That was one thing that was a turning point for me to say, enough is enough. We need to get somebody on the council with some bold progressive thoughts. It's gonna shake up some things, make some people uncomfortable, but fight for Peorians. And I think that's what we need. And that's why I'm running for City Council at large. Thank you.
You're gonna get a full slate tonight. This is Clara Underwood Foreman with a fixed tire, I assume. Okay, come on, tell us about yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Can you?
Speaking to the top of the line.
Okay. Oh, good evening, everyone. I gotta catch my breath here. I almost ran all the way from the car. I had a flat on the expressway. And Officer Purham stopped and actually fixed the tire for me. So let's give him, give him his due. Thank you. I am Clara Underwood Foreman, candidate for City Council at large. And I always say I put emphasis on the large part because I get the opportunity to work with all of Peoria and meet some great people, there's some great people in Peoria. I have been here in Peoria for over forty years. And I've had, man, just an awesome time being engaged in the city and talking to people and finding out what they were dealing with and different issues they were dealing with. And then I had an opportunity to work with some of them to, you know, to refer them to different places for resources. So it has been a journey. I've been a pastor for over twenty-five years. And that too allowed me to be able to, to be engaged in the community. I, I just have a heart for the people, a passion for the people. This is not new to me. I've been doing it for years out in the community. And so I'm looking forward to working with you at City Council. So I'm just so grateful and so, so just in awe about even having this opportunity to be able to run. So thank you for coming here and thank you all for having me after I got here late.
Okay. Once upon a time, there was a robust press that was commissioned with asking questions of people like these fine folks here in front of you. Now you're gonna be doing more of that for yourselves. But fortunately, the League of Women Voters has stepped up to help make sure that gap gets filled a little bit. We make forums like this available so you can come and see people for yourselves and ask questions for yourselves, which is good on you that you're all here. Oops, you know, I guess it's gonna be a do-it-yourself kind of thing from here on out. But, all right, our first question. I still get to pick some of them. And this one is not the most easy question that we have. Okay. Should the council raise taxes to cover police employer pension obligations? Costs are rising. The state requires ninety percent funding by 2040. Peoria is at about half-funded right now. And what should the city of Peoria do? Okay? And I can just tell you all, if you're not familiar, that pension problem is probably the biggest thing facing not just this city, but many of them in the state of Illinois. All right, we're rotating. So the first person up is Bernice Gordon.
Thank you for the question. As I understand it, it is a significant issue and concern for many of our citizens. I do not believe that the city should raise taxes to pay for the pension of my first responders who've met. But I do believe that we would benefit from extending the time to pay that money back. And that is why my vote went to you.
Our next question is Anu Wudupu.
Same question?
Yes, same question. Yeah. I do not believe we should raise taxes because I don't think we should burden our Peorians with more taxes. This is where we need to attract more businesses and increase our tax revenue, our revenue of our city, so that I also attract more people, more population, so that we can collect more taxes. And this is where we're going to spread out our income, our revenue.
Lawrence? Should the council raise taxes and what should the city do?
I don't necessarily discount raising taxes because if the taxes are raised, it'll probably be a very small amount on the property owners. But before that happens, before we have to do something like that, what we need to do, this, Peoria's not alone in this issue, okay? The municipalities, the towns and the townships and the counties, they're all suffering with this pension issue. So what we need to do is to have some kind of coordinated approach with the majority of these other municipalities going with the same, you know, suffering with the same issue. And if, you know, we work collectively together with these other municipalities, we can get the costs down. This is nothing new. I'm not saying this is, is, you know, a radical new idea. But we need to consider consolidating our burden, our pension burden, and going at it that way. Do it as a consolidated way. And one more thing, this is a union pension, so we need to cover it. We need to cover it.
Raising taxes will just run more people and businesses out of the city of Peoria and will continue to facilitate the challenge that we have even greater. Well, everyone has asked Springfield to help us with this and the biggest fix is in Springfield. So we all need to continue to push on them to address the amortization issue as well as the other pieces of the funding mechanism. But on the side, what we can control in the city is that we have to continue to drive economic growth to make the revenue pie bigger because we can't come to you and ask for more. We have to create something that grows on its own, which is what my focus has been on the council, is bringing in more businesses and jobs. That's sales tax revenue, property tax revenue that goes into the general fund and allows us to meet those obligations. Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you for that question. We're at fifty percent. It does need to be ninety percent at the end of the next decade. We're actually ahead of many municipalities, sad as it is to say. I think, you know, if the cliff were to actually come, I think Springfield probably would step in. But we do need to take steps now. I don't want to raise taxes. But, I mean, we need to, we need to do whatever we can to grow our tax base, as Anu referenced. You know, bring people into Peoria, find every, every way we can to get attractions in Peoria. Get the people in here and bring their dollars with them. You know, Portillo's was a good example. People come from McComb, people come from Pritzville, to Portillo's. Their dollars come, come to Peoria. We need to find more ideas like that, maybe festivals, maybe parades. Project, project a good image, a good positive image. I don't have much time, but vespa2023.com if you want to see more of my stuff. Thank you.
Should the council raise taxes and what should the city do? Yeah.
No, I don't think the council should raise taxes. This, these statutes start in Springfield. Springfield has zero interest in helping us out. As a matter of fact, they have a high interest in making us more dependent upon them. So it is up to us to get over this burden. And the only way I think we can do that locally is once again to change our economic climate in unique ways so that, so that investment dollars are raised here and come in from the outside because our city is the best place in, in the state to invest. We have that within our power. We don't have to be like everyone else in the state. Thank you.
I echo with the same sentiments that, that we don't want to raise any taxes. But then again, if you look at how other cities have, other states have done, they, they took a standard approach where they actually did a study where they wanted to have a fixed benefits, that they wanted to have a higher benefits for the, for the people who joined in the data file. But this is again, not a city issue, it's a state issue. As, as much as my knowledge goes, I think, as everybody said, economic growth is the most important way to do it. The way, the way I could do it is to bring more of the companies like, so we had entrepreneurships, we have the innovations like the Pringles. We got, you know, money ready for biotech. And then we can use the healthcare. And we also should invest money into the retail as well. We want the dollars of our people to be spent in Peoria, not outside Peoria. Probably that will happen. Thank you.
No, I would not raise taxes. We got high enough taxes as it is. I'm pretty sure I see the head shaking out there. Y'all don't know higher taxes either. I agree with actually the two councilmen that spoke up here. We need to come up with a bold way. Because our only way out of this is if we tax our way out, to grow our way out. And I think the way we grow our way out is we invest in our poorer neighborhoods. Make sure people have homeownership. Make sure people have local wages. They'll shop, they'll stay local. Maybe we might generate revenue that way. So I agree. But we need to think of a So I agree, but we need to think of a bold way to do this.
Claire? I agree as well as towards raising taxes. This is not just a city, can you? This is not just a city issue, this is a nationwide issue. I believe that probably every city in the, in the country is dealing with this. I believe that we also should, you know, look into how other cities are dealing with this issue. And then I also believe that we need to look at how we're being funded now and put those two things together and come up with a solution. I believe that one of the solutions is supporting our small businesses. Once we support our small businesses, money is spent back into the community and then we'll have revenue coming in.
Can I stand right here? It's easier. All right. No to raising taxes. One of the things I believe that we should focus on, as it has been mentioned before and on the last one's speech, so it's kind of beaten it into your heads, that we do need to expand our revenue base. But one of the things with that, my master's in public administration has taught me that revenue base has a number of different things that play into that. You have service fee, code enforcement, and then you also have taxes. But another piece besides dealing with those revenue, expanding the revenue bases, is people need to get back to work. If people don't have money to spend, they can't pay their taxes, they can't apply money towards what the city is doing. So we need to focus also on that aspect, making sure that we have, if we're bringing in businesses, businesses need people to work, we need to get those people to work so that they can pay their fair share of taxes, just like everybody else does. And that will help build the revenue base for the city.
Thank you. Right, our second question. It's a little bit easier maybe. Okay. If you were voting for one of the remaining candidates other than yourself, who would you select and why?
Of course, I get the hardest question. Well, I'm going to go with my fellow Bernice Golden Young because we both have served on the same company, Women's Fund, Women Power. Sorry, you know, we both are there for empowering women and educating girls and strengthening the families. We strongly believe in that. And also, we are both are strong believers in mentoring our youth and creating next generation of leaders. So that would be, and she is the candidate I would support with me and I would want to be with me, sitting next to me with the city council. Sorry, guys, no offense.
Lawrence, you're up. But can you be standing on the chair, huh?
Thank you for the question. I would unequivocally support Demario Boon. I believe in him. I think that he represents a fresh approach, an experienced approach to the many issues that are facing the city. And so I would have no problem. And I urge other people as well to vote for Demario.
You can choose anybody up here.
Thanks for that. One of the senior members of the council who has to put six votes together to get something passed. Now, no matter how this goes, it's going to go wrong. I'm going to go with Dr. Velpula. Fortunately, I actually had the opportunity to put Dr. Velpula on the council when it came to making the decision to make a replacement and about two years ago. And I think he, he brings a genuine knowledge base and service commitment to the community that we need, that represents a different demographic than we've had on the council and also a different background as it comes to his in-depth knowledge in the medical community. And as, as we can see, our medical community is what's growing here and that's something that we need to continue to foster. And he's been a great asset and will continue to be so. Thank you.
Mike, you're up.
Yes, this is a, this is tough. I mean, I really do like them all, so I would just, you know, use my six votes or five votes. If I could split it nine ways, I would, whatever that comes out to. But no, I, I agree that Kiran is, is a good guy. I think he's, I think he just follows his heart and he votes his heart. And he's, you know, he's just a practical guy. You know, he was appointed a couple of years ago and he's, I think he's made a good decision so far. So I mean, you know, I'm watching it from the sidelines, but I do like his approach during, during council meetings. Again, no shade to anybody else. I would also vote for you if I could, but we'll give a one choice.
Yes. Well, I don't really like the question. I really don't. And I think everyone can speak for themselves quite well. And you folks are smart enough to make the choice, so I will not answer the question.
Thank you. This is Kiran again. Same Kiran they were mentioning. So, so if I were to vote, I probably would vote for people who have the same vision, who have the same vision to make Peoria the next place to live. Unfortunately, we, we don't have a collective, we cannot make collective decisions. And we need people who have a like-mindedness to make sure that we are, we are elected not for our personal things, but we are there for the city of Peoria. So in that fashion, if I see, I see a lot of people, I probably will go with my incumbents and pick a couple of the people who, who actually have the same mindset because we need seven cheerleaders for Peoria, not one. And everybody has to work. And we, it's not a privilege, it's a blessing to be there on the city council to help, to help the city of Peoria to grow. Thank you.
Demario.
I'd also hate this question. But to honor the rules and what was asked, one of the things you tasked us with is making hard decisions. So I think not answering the question kind of would show a little bit of myself. But also, I want to show that Peoria is supposed to be the city of gratitude and we, we talk about that. So when a man says that he believes in me, I want to show him my gratitude and say, I believe in you too. You do, I don't know why you make me emotional. But I love his fight and I love how he's in the trenches and sometimes he may scream out stuff and I'm like, what the heck are you talking about? But this man goes hard and pain for everybody and that embodies me too. So I think that's why I would, I would choose you because you're the kind of nerd, so I appreciate it.
Clara? I'm like John, I'm not answering, of course. I would pick Benjamin because we are co-workers in the gospel and because we have to be good to those and they said especially those who are of the household faith. So I would pick him because, man, both of us, you know, looking at where we are and where we got ourselves into, so I would have him.
They never should have made this question. But to be honest and to be fair, for me, I would have to pick somebody that I know has the same kind of mindset or thought process that I have. And this is going to come as a surprise, but Kiran, you have received a number of notes and secret messages through Becky Rosser from me. And so I have seen how Kiran has been able to take the information that I've passed forward through an intermediary and being able to use that on the council and move forward some thoughts that are very important to a number of constituents that I have worked with to make sure that we are providing what needs to be done.
I like you all. No, you know, I actually believe that we can't have one mind, right? I believe that we need to have more unique perspectives that come together and that will reach the masses. I also, and not because she chose me, but I would choose Anu. And I'll tell you why, because she and I have done work together and I can work half of the room, she can work half the room, and it doesn't matter what your background is, what your experience is, who, you know, who you know. And that's what this role is about. It is about reaching people, not, not just people who we're familiar with, it's about reaching people that we don't know. And so for that reason, I think she has that ability to do such.
Thank you very much. Okay, you all have passed the first test, which is nobody fell off the stage. Good job. Right, so we're wrapping up.
Okay, so now we're on to this.